Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council member in and for the city of Williamson, County of Ingham, and State of Michigan according to the best of your ability? So help me God.
So now they're going to sign the official registry for their oath. So that's four new council members that were elected in November. So now there's three of us that our council term ends in 2024, and these four gentlemen will be on until 2026. So we're always alternating election cycles. We're never all done at the same time.
Yes, you are. Now that your official sky. Oh, no. I get to be up here for the very last meeting of the year. Yep, and I'm on the end. So what happens is in December, Holly just randomly puts the name where she wants it.
No, they're alphabetical.
Well, they're alphabetical.
The first meeting, they're alphabetical.
And this is the one where you can make a motion or something like that? Is that the way?
One and only.
So I did hear from Tommy, his son is playing basketball.
Oh, okay.
I have to take my nose with my red pen. If you notice anything about me, I love my red pen.
I do. Well, here's a little trivia. So Brandon and I both met because we worked in student housing, and then I did property inspections, and he was the manager, but he had to take care of all things that I found.
All right, we're going to call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Everybody will rise for the pledge of allegiance. If we could have the Boy Scouts lead that for us. And now we're going to do the roll call. Lannion?
Present.
Pratt?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Ben Oster?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
I'll make the motion to excuse Councilman Pratt.
Second. All those in favor of excusing Councilman Pratt, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have approval of the agenda for tonight. I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have audience participation. We have a maximum of five minutes for any audience members that want to speak at this time.
My name's Nancy Ervin. I'd like to, I don't know who dressed the council on. At the time when a lot was purchased by Elevator Street, the Grandma's Baskets, part of that contract or agreement was that on completion of Elevator Street, it would be renamed Norma Ervin Court, I believe. Now, to me, it looks like it is complete, but the Elevator Street sign went back up. But this was part of the agreement of purchasing Grandma's Baskets. So do we know when that might be taking place?
Yeah, we normally don't respond to public comment, but given the, you know, the concern, I'm not sure what oversight in that is, but we're certainly going to honor that obligation with the sign up.
Yes, I have seen the contract. I don't have a copy of it. I was looking at it when the Elevator Street project was well underway. It does call for Elevator Street to be renamed Norma Jean Court, and I think Jean may be spelled different than you might think. It's in the contract. I spoke to the past city manager, Corey Schmidt, about this, and he acknowledged that that was the deal, but that would be taken care of at the end of the project, and of course, he left before the project was completed.
Because I don't know if there was going to be other businesses down there now, but it would be pretty bad if they all do their addresses on Elevator Street, and then they have to go through and change them. So I might, that kind of looked into?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else for audience participation at this time?
Yeah.
Steven Marge, I'm the Cub Master and Den Leader for the Cub Scouts. I just want to say thank you to the city council for letting us come in and type you guys in the ear and ask you guys questions. Not all our Cub Scouts make tonight, but I thank you for taking the time to explain how city government works to these kids, and I hope they got their answers, their questions answered, and I just want to say thank you, guys.
Is there anybody else for audience participation at this time? Okay. Moving on, we have the election of the mayor and mayor pro temp. Do I have any motion for the mayor at this time?
I'll take a motion for Tammy Gilroy to be the mayor. Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Oster?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
I could have walked over there. It's kind of nice if they all get to touch the mantle. You'd all like to, you know, knock it out of them, which makes me way down here. Well, thank you, gentlemen. I do appreciate that. And now moving on in business, I'm looking for a motion for mayor pro temp.
Take a motion, Brandon Lannion.
Thank you. All right. Do we need a roll call for that, Holly? All right, well, you call, roll, please. Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Oster?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much for being willing to do that, Brandon. I appreciate it. And I know you'll probably get to sit in that seat next to here.
I'll remember.
You're going to, you're going to remember. Yeah, all right. All right, well, right now, I'm looking for approval for our council meeting minutes of November 28, 2022, please.
That's what move.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you so much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. And now we have an opportunity for accounts payable. Who got to look at accounts payable? Dan, thank you so much.
So I got an opportunity to look over the accounts payable. Everything looked in order, so I would like to make a motion that we pay checks 76230 through 76258 and ACH 338 through 343 for a total of $54,523.94.
Thank you, Dan. At this time, does anybody have any questions regarding accounts payable for this evening? All right, thank you so much. I think that's the smallest amount we've had on here. All right, moving on.
I'll second.
Absolutely. All right, moving along, we have our accounts, our audit present, yes.
We need to go.
Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. See, that's why he's going to be my, a good mayor for the county. All right, Holly, will you call the roll, please, for accounts pay?
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Oster?
Yes.
All right, moving on, we've got our audit presentation by Rosalind Prestige and Company, and she already handed out the packet. Thank you so much for being here. We have new council members this evening. Could you please introduce yourself?
Okay, my name is Christina. I work with Rosalind Prestige and Company. We've been doing the audit for the city for several years now, and we appreciate the opportunity to come tonight and talk to you about your financial statements. First, first meeting, and you get to cover the financial statements. That's exciting. So this might be a lot of new information for you all. What I brought with me tonight is a summarized version of the full audit report. I do have a copy of that as well. If you have questions on what I cover this evening, actually what this is, or just selected pages out of that full audit report, we do that so that we can add some highlighting, add some notes, and it helps us to focus on some specific topics to talk about tonight. But if you have questions on information that's not included in here but was included in the full audit report, please just let me know. I know I have just a little bit of time tonight to cover some of the basics, but if you have questions later, feel free to call our office. We're more than happy to talk to you about those questions. Okay, all right. If you turn the first page in, we have the independent auditor's report. Here's where we give the opinion on the audit itself. The structure of this letter has changed quite a bit. They have now moved the opinion paragraph, which is the most important opinion, or most important part of the letter, to very top. Under the opinions, I've put a box around the opinion. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly. That is called an unqualified opinion. You can have two other types of opinion. You can have a qualified or an adverse opinion. You don't really want either one of those. This is the highest level of assurance that we can give. That's the kind of wording that you want to have in your letter. Okay? Another item that's new this year, I've got another box around there, change in accounting principle. Whenever there's a change in accounting principle, we have to include that in this opinion letter. So I've put a box around that to show you that that is new this year. That will be there again next year. We'll talk about that in a minute, but that's not typically in the opinion letter if there are no new accounting principles adopted. The rest of the letter has some standard language, so I'm going to go past that. We're going to go over to page three. This is the balance sheet for governmental funds. Now, the way we put this packet together, it's a little bit out of order, and you were to pick up your actual financial statements. We do that for a purpose as well. The, we like to present to you the governmental funds first, because this is typically how you'll receive the information out of the software. Here, we list all of the major funds in individual columns, and then the non-major governmental funds are combined together and called non-major. For the city of Williamson, the non-major governmental funds represents only one other fund, and I have a note on top of that. That's the 2003 Act 342 bond debt. Page three is the balance sheet. This is where we list all of the assets or items that are owned by the city. After that, we list all of the liabilities. Those are items that are owed to others. And then the difference between those two items is called fund balances. For the general fund, total assets as of the end of the year were 2.8 million, liabilities 553,000. So the difference between those two is fund balance, and in the general fund, that was 2.3 million. I have an analysis at the bottom of that page. Many times, we'll get asked, how do we stand for the year? We do an analysis of total fund balance, actually unassigned fund balance compared to the expenditures for the year. Fund balance, you can see here, is broken down into a couple different categories. You have non-spendable, you have restricted. Unassigned is what's left over. That's what you can use to pay your bills. So we take that unassigned fund balance of 2.2 million in the general fund, and we compare it to the general fund's expenditures for the year to see what that comparison looks like. That comparison for the city of Williamson is 110%. What that means is the unassigned fund balance represents over 100% of the current year expenditures. That means you could stop receiving revenue, and you could still function for over a year to have a very healthy fund balance in the The next page is page five. This is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. I also want to let you know that these two pages are what's called a modified accrual basis. That means you stop at the end of the fiscal year and only look out 60 days. These two pages do not include long-term information, such as your capital assets, your long-term debt. That gets rolled into a couple of pages that I'll show you next. But these are on a modified accrual basis. It's a short-term basis. This page is kind of an income statement, if you will. We list the revenues first. That's all the money coming in. Expenditures after that. We have another category called other financing sources and uses. Those don't fit into either the revenue or expenditures based on the description. And three lines from the bottom you'll see is the net change in fund balance. That's your net income or loss. For the general fund, that was a positive $281,000 for the year. So that was added to your fund balance as of year-end based on operations for the entire year. The next page is actually page one. So what we do is we take all of that information and add to it the long-term information, capital assets, long-term debt, information related to pension plans, defined benefit pension plans, and your other post-employment benefit plans. Those are called OPEB plans. This is the statement of net position, which is another balance sheet, but on a long-term basis. You'll see at the top, I've listed there, that's a full accrual. That's a long-term. You take that end-of-year 60-day lookout, and then go beyond that as well. The governmental activities column, which is listed here first, takes all of those funds, those governmental funds that we just covered, puts them into one column and adds all of that long-term activity. The business-type activities is a summarization of your proprietary funds that are also in your financial statements, water sewer funds, internal service funds. For the governmental activities, total assets as of year-end were 9 million, deferred outflows of 260, total liabilities were 2 million, deferred inflows 450. And then here, the difference between all of those components is called net position. Net position for the city as of year-end was 6.6 million. And then page two after that is, looks a little different, but it is the income statement on a full accrual or long-term basis. I highlighted the third row from the bottom. You'll see that for governmental activities. Activity for the year resulted in a net income of 272,000. And then for the business-type activities, resulted in an income of 176,000 for the year. Those are both items added to the bottom line, added to the net position for the year. Next page is page 27 out of the notes. I like to sometimes show this information. This is related to the table at the top. It's related to the debt for the city. When we show the debt for the city in the notes, we have to start with last year's ending balance, which is this year's beginning. We show all of the additions. Here, you would see any new debt that was taken out, deletions, which are regular payments on your debt, and then we show the ending balance. I put a box around the additions and deletions to show you that although you do see some additions, that was in relation to vacation and sick time, but there were no new debt items added this year. And under deletions, you'll see the regular payment of debt throughout the year. The next page is page 37 out of the notes. Toward the bottom, I wanted to show you, we have a new note in there for the change in accounting principle. Before fiscal year 2022, the city adopted GASV87, which deals with leases. Before GASV87, leases were called either operating or capital. Now, they're either called non-GASV87 or GASV87 leases. So this new pronouncement requires a change in how you account for your leases. It also provided some guidance on if the city were to be the lessor, you also had to follow some new guidance on those types of leases as well. On page 38, which is the next page, I highlighted that there were no material, there was no material impact on the city's financial statements for GASV87. And then below that, note 14, you've got a new GASV coming next year, GASV96. That's going to be dealing with subscription-based information technology arrangements. That follows the same methodologies, if you will, for GASV87. Now, you'll have to apply that same thought process to IT arrangements that are on a subscription basis. The next page is the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. This is the letter where we're required to communicate with you anything that we have found during our audit that rises to the level of being in the letter regarding internal control and compliance. I highlighted some of the wording down here. During our audit, we did not identify deficiencies in internal control that we considered to be material. And also, the results of our tests disclosed no instances of non-compliance that we're required to talk to you about. So again, that is the type of wording you want to have there. If there were items that we saw that were required to communicate with you, those would have been in that letter. The next page, actually, the next two pages, this letter is communication that we're required to have with those charged with governance. That's this board here. At the conclusion of the audit, just for your reference, we're required to do that at two different times during the audit. We're required to do it during planning. So next year, you'll receive a letter during the planning process, and then we do it at the conclusion. And this is the letter that we give you at the conclusion. Has a lot of standard language in there. Feel free to read it. I just wanted to point that out to you because we are required to deliver that to you. So that's just some of the highlights. Any questions? I know that's a lot to throw at you, especially the new board members.
Yeah, one question about, you said we could last one year if we stopped taking in funds. I'm curious if there's a minimum recommendation for that?
Minimum recommendation, we get that question a lot, too. We do like to see it at a minimum, eight to 12% in fund balance. Again, you guys are at 110%.
Okay.
Your name again?
My name is Christina.
Christina, okay. I think that the Cub Scouts should have to sit through this.
It's hard enough for the board members to sit through.
They exited very quickly.
I've never had to file a Boy Scout presentation for that, and still I'm like that.
Any other questions for Christina? Christina, thank you so much for coming. As always, it's such a pleasure to have you here to be able to tell us that we're in a very good position.
Very good position. I would like to tell you it's been a pleasure working with you. Great addition.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Now, don't leave in a rush like the Cubbies.
Okay. I do think I'll go, though, I think.
All right. Have a great holiday, Christina. Thank you again so much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
All right, moving along on our agenda, we're going to move right into our action items, even though it looks like a long list. We have several reappointments and appointments, so I'm going to read through each of them and look for those motions. The first we have is the reappointment of Brandon Gilroy to the Planning Commission for a term to expire 6/30 of 2025.
So move.
Thank you. Do I have support? Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lannion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Oster?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, next is reappointment of Kathleen DeForest to the Board of Review for a term to expire 1/1 of 2026.
So move.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Hanson?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Oster?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
All right, next is reappointment of Robert DeGarbo to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term, a term to expire 1/1 of 2026.
So move.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Oster?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
All right, we have a new appointment of Wendy Carol Perry to the Downtown Belt Authority for a term to expire 6/30 of 2025.
All right, so move.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you both. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Oster?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
And we all knew that I could not let Noah get away. We have an appointment of Noah Ballinger to the Planning Commission for a term to expire June 30, 2023.
So move.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Ben Oster?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, next on our agenda, we have our consideration of the 2023 city council meeting dates and times. Holly, thank you so much for putting this, this schedule together for us. I don't see any meetings that we would need to adjust due to holidays, so with that, I'm looking for a motion to move this board for our 2023 meeting dates.
Move to accept the date proposed for our meetings?
Thank you, Steve. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Terry, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Oh, my gosh.
Because he's just been here for so long.
Did I say that?
Jenkins?
Yes.
About that?
Ben Oster? Yes.
Thank you, Holly. I appreciate that. All right. See, we miss you.
Holly made a mistake.
No.
Hi, man.
No, that is quite all right.
This is not a council here to reference someone who works somewhere else.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. All right, next we have our Depot Museum lease amendment. And John, I'm going to let you take over on this. And I see we have Mitch in the, in the audience, and Earl.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy. I'm a member of the council. So the depot in the city has had an agreement. The original agreement was signed in 1986. It was a 25-year agreement, which is something amazing to think about it. So towards the end of that agreement, the city and the depot worked in good faith to craft a new agreement that's a five-year rolling term. And one of the provisions in there was for the depot to pay for the utilities, and they were in a position to do that. But recently, when the Chamber of Commerce moved out, it really left a hole in the depot budget. And they don't have a large budget, and they do a great job. They're very diligent about managing their resources and trying to raise funds when they can for their activities. So given the fact that they were left somewhat in a lurch with the Chamber moving out and a lot of reasons why that happened, and that's kind of a discussion for another time, but they're sort of left with a hole moving forward in their budget. So what we're asking for tonight is just a simple amendment, a lease agreement for the city to pay the gas and electric utilities. Again, it's not a lot of dollars. You know, it's not a small amount. It's about 1,500 bucks total for a year. One thing I want to point out, for the life of the lease, that the depot has put probably at least $25,000 to $30,000 in leasehold improvements to the building, and, you know, roof, and they've done other things in the building. And I'm not talking about the displays, which are awesome and amazing, and they do a great job with that. I'm talking about actual, it's a city building. And so without those improvements, you know, the building, the building could have fallen into a bit of disrepair. So just asking for a simple amendment to the lease. Certainly, if the Chamber moves back, which could be a possibility, we could always amend the lease again. But be happy to answer any questions you may have. The depot board's well-represented here. They could answer any questions you might have as well.
All right. Does anybody have any questions regarding this? Yes, David?
I just want to say that the Depot Museum is a huge value add to the community. They do a ton of great presentations throughout the year, have done a great job with that building and everything they've done down there. This is, for us to take this on, I don't think, to get those services, this is well worth that investment. I'm just going to say, I wish the Chamber had, had made some better decisions with what they're, with what they're doing, because I thought that was a good partnership. But I think this is a, is a good move for the city.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it's a very good movement. And just like John said, this is a city-owned building, and they've put a tremendous amount of own financial dedication into it. They've maintained it beautifully, and it's preserving our city's history, you know, generational of family. It just, it, I agree with Dan. I wish that things would have happened on a little bit different cadence. But regardless of that moving forward, I think this is
But regardless of that, moving forward, I think this is the right thing to do as well. Terry?
As a relative newcomer, I wanted to say thank you for your book. I've been here a little over four years, something like that, and it just, there's a lot of history here. And read the Mitch book, and then you get a connection with it.
I, I'm, I'm, thank you, Your Honor. I'm working on a second book.
Did you just call me Your Honor?
That's okay. There's a lot of things happening here tonight.
I'm still trying to get TMI in the middle.
I know, right? It's all, it's all, you know.
I didn't know Steve was here.
It's like a parallel universe tonight.
Yeah, so I'm working on a, on a second book. I was just working on it today. And so I hope to have that out, I'm hoping within a year, and we'll have some stories. Just to throw it out, I'm trying to research the history of the school song, why we're the Hornets, why we are green and white. And it was a, a senior girl in night, the class of nineteen thirty-eight that wrote the song, and I got in touch with her daughter last week, and she gave me some information. I gave her some. So it's, it's kind of, it's kind of neat. So I appreciate all the comments. I'm, I'm the volunteer president of the board, and thank you for the support. But yeah, I hope to have another book out, hopefully, in a year, hopefully.
Well, if there's no other questions regarding this lease agreement, I'm looking for a motion to move this forward.
Want to make a motion to amend section five B of the lease agreement with Williamson Depot Board for the Depot Museum.
Thank you so much. Thank you both. If there's no other questions or further discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osper?
Yeah.
Rhines?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you so much for being here this evening. All right, moving along, we've got the twenty-twenty-three health insurance renewal. John, go ahead.
Thank you, members of council, Mayor Gilroy. So this is an annual item that we, we bring before council. We do budget for health insurance and dental insurance, a bit of coverage as part of the annual budget. And we usually are pretty good about estimating the cost and increases. This is a thirteen, almost fourteen percent is pretty significant. You know, we pay almost a hundred and fifty, two-hundred thousand dollars total in, in health insurance coverage. We, we are recommending approval tonight. We are moving into a collective bargaining season for, for our public works and then leases the, the next year after. But we will be meeting the unions and figuring out a way in our next agreement to get some cost containment, maybe offer, offer some additional plans or some different plans. You know, there, there's really, having done this for a long time, there's really, I, I can't count, I don't have enough fingers and toes to count the number of times that there's been increases. It usually doesn't go the other way. So you're usually left with, with changing plans. I didn't feel that was, was a, a good move to do, considering that we are moving into a new collective bargaining season. So, so it's a little bit more than we, we budgeted for. We can certainly accommodate in our budget. As you heard from the audit tonight, we are doing well. But I just want to remind folks, we, we, when we do work with our unions, we want to work in good faith. We want to make sure that there's, there's good coverage provided for them, but it also has to be fair, if I'm being honest, to all of you. So be happy to be the punching bag for the bearer of bad news, for the insurance rates, but rest assured, we'll do what we can moving forward to do some cost containment. The only, only other, I guess, on the bright side, because of staffing changes, just because, you know, one was the family coverage and, and one person was a, is a single person, will actually have a, the overall amount will be less, but the overall rate will be, will be going up with the changes.
All right. Thank you.
I also make a, a comment, not even a question. I mean, this, it seemed like a lot, but I mean, we just got hit in our association with a fifteen percent raise. So like, this is, this is coming across the board. Like, this is normal. Right now, all insurance companies are taking prices, so. I mean, thirteen point nine is better than the fifteen we got hit with, so.
Good. You know, I think we do a very good job of making sure that our city staff has the best packages that we're able to provide. And I'm very happy to be able to, to help move this forward so that we can go into next year and be prepared for those discussions that we're going to have. Yes?
Yeah, with your experience, that when employees interface with the health system, that's, that is fine with the plan.
So employees, to, to cheer, so.
Yes.
Yeah, and employees are, are really good about voicing their dissatisfaction with, with health insurance or dental providers. And in my, you know, twenty-five years-plus experience, I haven't had that since I've been here. So I think people are generally happy with the, the options. But I can tell you that during collective bargaining, I imagine that there'll be, if there are already, you know, old fractures, we'll, we'll know about those.
Yep. Yep. Yes, Terry and Steve. Terry?
Okay. You, I asked for a list of all the employees of the city. I was surprised, because it's twenty-three people. That's, I was more than ever expecting. And it's just a quick question, and I don't know if this is related or not, but how many of them are AFSCME? How many are CCLP, and how many are non-union?
Yeah, so there are six in the Capitol Labor Council, which is police, and then there are seven in the ASME.
And the rest are non-union?
That's correct.
Steve?
How does this interplay with the negotiations? And this may be an out-of-council discussion, but I know that later we'll be talking about a wage increase also. And you mentioned that you're going to be involved in collective bargaining. How, how does that fit together?
Sure, so.
Great question.
Yeah, the wage increases that are before you tonight, those are part of the existing agreement. So those have already been agreed to by, by City Council when the contracts were negotiated before. And the same with the healthcare, it's the, it's the coverage. Because again, the employees are somewhat removed from, once, once the rates are set, I mean, we, we do have a, you know, the PHV, we have a health savings account, which we, we put a certain amount into, and that, that makes up the difference for deductibles. But they're removed from that decision because we agreed to this plan for them. And so for, it does take into account the overall package when we do collective bargaining. That, you know, you, if you want, you know, in, in the next contract, for example, if you want a higher wage, wage increase, you may have to agree to a lesser health plan, or vice versa. If you want a richer health plan, or a richer health benefit, or, or something else, then you'd have to agree. So it's the, well, and, and, you know, this isn't like stealing and giving away trade secrets. It's like how I negotiate. There's, there's the overall cost of the employee, because ultimately, our taxpayers, they want good service, and if we have happy employees, we're going to get that. So it doesn't really matter, you know, where the, where the dollars are spent. And I think that's safe for the employees, as long as they get, you know, a balance of the two.
Going back to Terry's question real quick, we have a, a lot of our contracts with the two different unions. They have the, what is it? I'm forgetting the name of the clause. But basically, when we give the non-union employees a pay raise, that it includes the, the collective wood bargain.
Yeah.
The me-too.
The me-too.
The me-too, yeah.
So, so that's how some of that ties in.
So it's connected, yes.
I mean, for as long as I've been sitting at, at this council table, we have done very well making sure that our city staff is taken care of through collective bargaining, through different healthcare packages, even retirees that have left and, and still are tied to the packages that they have here because of their retiring benefits. So I know that, that we, we don't take this lightly, and we want to make sure that we can do the best that we can for, because, I mean, just like Terry said, we, we do actually have quite a large city staff. It does not matter whether it's, you know, Police Department, DPW, wastewater treatment, city staff here in these offices. We want to make sure that every single one of them is taken care of. Any other questions for, for John? All right, I'm looking for that motion to move it forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the physician's health plan, HSA, HMO, exclusive gold, one-thousand-five-hundred-dollar plan with blue dental, with a one-thousand-dollar slash two-hundred, two-thousand-dollar health savings account contribution for the twenty-twenty-three calendar year.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks. Thank you. So I appreciate that. Any other questions or discussion before I ask for the roll? All right, Holly?
Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osper?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes. All right, our last action item for this evening is our twenty-twenty-three cost of living wage increase. And John, I'll turn it back over to you again.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So, so tonight, we are requesting a three-percent raise across the board for all of our employees. Just to get a little bit of the background, the Capitol City Labor Program represents our police officers, and ASME represents the, the DPW employees, and everybody else is a non-union employee. One thing that's somewhat unique is that in Williamson, and this, this predates me quite long before, we've already modeled a wage increase into the budget that you've approved. And so we would never bring a wage increase to you that is not part of the adopted budget. So these were contemplated during the budget that was approved for July one, for the fiscal year that we're in. And we're calling it the cost of living, but as all of you know, inflation rate for the past year was about eight-point-three percent. So certainly, you know, in, in a perfect world, we'd be able to offer that. But I think continuing to provide incremental raises will keep us competitive. I'll, I'll tell you, in the region that we're in, in particular for, for law enforcement, our, our number one enemy is going to be attrition based on salaries paid. And we're competing with Meridian Township, Michigan State, East Lansing, Lansing, Ingham County, Livingston County, Chiawase County. So we're competing with them for, for wages. And so, and we're towards the bottom of the scale. So I think that offering what I call a modest increase that is budgeted, budgeted, and that we can afford, because it is, you know, it has to be affordable. To give you an idea of the scope, our total salary across the board is rated about one-point-four million. So the impact of the three-percent raise is about forty-two thousand dollars, which is about one percent of the overall operating, just on, if you just took the general fund. But across all governmental funds, it's, it's less than half a percent. I think it's a fair increase for, for council to consider.
Okay, hold up to questions. Steve?
Is that one-point-four million inclusive of fringe benefits?
That's just salary.
Your salary.
Yes.
And you said we're low. Could you elaborate on that? We're low?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I would defer, I guess, to the chief for like, you know, the hourly rates that folks are given over jurisdictions. But I would say we're probably about at least five to ten percent lower than all those jurisdictions on an hourly basis. So if we're at twenty-five bucks an hour, most of the other organizations are, are upwards of thirty bucks an hour.
And the, the one thing to point out, too, is that at our last, last labor negotiations, we actually upped, we also included language that if a new hire was coming in with a certain amount of experience, that would bump them up in the tier so that they didn't start out at the lower level. So, you know, that's something that we're always looking at, is how can we be more competitive with the municipalities that are around us? Chief has done a great job this past year with that labor contract and making sure that we can be competitive when we're bringing in new officers. But we still have a lot of work to do, I think. And, you know, we'll, we'll keep working on it, especially as we go into, you know, contract negotiations again. Dan?
Also, with that last contract with the, with our police officers, we added an extra step on the higher end so that we eliminated a lower step. So they started out at a higher wage than they had been, and then we added a higher step so that when they top out on the high end of the wage scale, it is an increase over where it's been on the old town. So we've been, we're not where we want to be, but we've been making steps to try and bridge that.
Yes.
Well, I would point out that I, I, you know, looking at the, the last ASME contract, the lowest maintenance wage scale, you can make more at McDonald's than you can at the lowest wage scale for, if you, if you're an entry level for, for maintenance here.
Yes, Terry?
This question for the chief. If it's not just the money, what's the sweetener? How do you recruit people to come to Williamson? I mean, it's a great town and, and all that kind of, but what, what's the sweetener? What, what was the attraction?
A lot of it is making it the good working environment. Several things that I've done, we've gone from eight-hour shifts to twelve-hour shifts, which this generation wants. We've softened the uniforms. As you, you can see, we've gone more to a more relaxed look. The BDUs are more comfortable for the guys.
You have more training?
We've done tons of training. We've increased the potential of the instructors. So a lot of my instructor, pretty often are instructors in different categories, training in different categories of expertise. Sending Detective Pintar to tons of trainings, give him that ability for us to work our own cases. I'll speak about that a little bit, one case we had, a couple cases we had last week. You caught me off guard. I had no time to think about it.
Technology, new equipment upgrades, new vehicles, I mean, really.
Or vehicles, just.
So I guess you sum that up as the environment, working environment. Okay. And I guess to follow on to that is, if you're going to retire, how are we going to maintain that working environment? Are you, are you in the process of recruiting and training a replacement?
Well, that is really not up to me. That would be the city manager.
Okay.
But I, I have told some friends of mine who I think would be good candidates for the job to be looking for the posting.
Okay. You write this down, right?
All right. I also think, too, to, to tap onto what Chief said, too. You know, I think what, what's really desirable, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but it's a small department, which means we have a, a, a bigger camaraderie, you know, working together than being an MSU with, you know, or a East Lansing or a Lansing with that many officers. They know each other intimately. They, you know, they're, correct me if I'm wrong, they're friends outside of work, too. So that's that, you know, relationship building that you get at that small community here that I think is, you know, pretty desirable as well.
And to be a hundred percent honest, I, I've been asked more times than I, I care to recall, Lisa, how's the politics over there? It's got to be terrible in that small town. And I'll, I'll tell them, sweet enough, that's the best part about it. We've got a great mayor, city council, city manager. And I tell them, it's great to work for. You don't have that stress over your head of worrying about that. And that's just a huge selling point as well, out here in this community.
Okay, it's invited. That's good.
Definitely. Any other questions regarding our wage increase possibility? All right, I'm looking for that motion to move it forward, please.
Make a motion to approve cost of living adjustment, COLA, of three percent for non-union AFSCME and Capitol City Labor Program. CCLP represents city employees effective, effective January one, twenty-twenty-three. The American federal state county municipal employees, union, or, or, union represents the Department of Public Works employees, Capitol City Labor Program represents the police office.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Do I have support for that motion?
I support.
Thank you. If there's no further questions or discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Ben Osper?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanian?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. Moving into our discussion items, we have our continued conversation regarding road diet. John, do we have an update?
Yeah, thank you, members of council, Mayor Gilroy. So we are still in design phase, um still right on target to to have um public meetings for new council members. I think I met with Mr. Jenkins, I'll hopefully meet with with Scott here shortly um to bring everybody up to speed on everything. The road diets moving forward and that's moving from four lanes of traffic or two lanes of traffic in each direction to a lane in each direction with a with a turn lane on Potnum Street as well as Grand River and Forty-three. So pretty exciting project. I thought we'd wow the Cub Scouts with that information, but uh.
More impressed.
No, no, parents might be, but Cub Scouts not yet.
So, but that's really, that's really all I had. I mean, we're still, we agreed to keep this on here, so we didn't lose momentum and, you know, we haven't lost any dad. I talked to our city engineer today, they're, you know, Spicer's diligently working away.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate that. Uh, moving along, correspondence received information. We do not have any department head reports. Um, we have John's memo here, so I'm going to go ahead and go right back to him. Is there anything that you'd like to add to your city manager report?
No, nothing to add. I am not, since since you're still there, still here, I am going to apologize to the urban family that that sign hasn't been changed. We're going to make that happen and, you know, looking for someone to blame, you can blame me. Uh, but we'll we'll go ahead and make and fix that. You have you have my word on that, so. And I and I appreciate the way that you asked the question and 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 thank you for that. But it's just an oversight, we'll fix it.
Tom is still, Tom Urban's still alive.
Yep.
He's in a nursing facility. So, you know, it'd be really nice when he's.
Absolutely. First thing I leave tomorrow is talk to our city engineer about getting this signed up there.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, the only thing I would add, you know, I thought the light parade was great, you know, it was a little chilly, but the town was was alive and and it was it was popping, so it was good. Um, we are going to, we're going to have a joint meeting with Chamber and DDA at in January, probably likely at the January DDA meeting. Just to talk about some priorities for some things and really all get on the same page. You know, it's just my observation coming around being here for years that there's a lot of us that are on the same board. We just need to do a better job of communicating with each other than communicating with the with the community at large. The only thing I'll touch on in the report, this upcoming agenda item, we will talk about the police chief search at the January ninth meeting, twenty twenty-three, and that is our next meeting, January ninth. We do have Parks Meeting on Wednesday. Our Parks Chair is here, he strong-armed us into having a meeting, one more. We're going to be talking about the Memorial Park pathway. Bob is going to be here from LAP, um so we'll have a presentation for that, so that'd be pretty cool. We'll get a progress update on that. And next week, we do have Tifa and DDA, so we still have a couple of meetings left out this year, so that's all I have.
All right, any questions for city manager, Brian, move up. All right.
Ooh, a comment.
Yes.
I see Spicer um marks and surveying marks on Lloyd Street.
Yep.
And that makes some people, there's some people that are happy in that area.
Good.
And they're not really, really happy because it's not re paved yet.
Right.
It's moving in the right direction, thank you.
Yeah, well, I I've got survey stakes in my front yard, so it's even better. Yes, okay.
Fantastic question, why is it called road diet?
Okay, the reason why is because we are slimming down the road. Correct me if I'm wrong, John.
So.
We're slimming.
Department of Transportation, it's actually a national.
It's an MDA, it's an MDA term.
Oh, it is.
Not ours, we'll just go on.
Because of the congestion, we're trying to alleviate that congestion, so road diet is just kind of what has stuck.
I like it a lot.
For a few rest carbs.
Yeah, yeah, right. All right, in our packet this evening, we did have a report from Livingston County Department of Building and Safety Engineering. They do all of our permitting for us here in the city of Williamson. Even though we're going into the colder months, there's still work being done. So that is always good to see. If you do have questions regarding that, please reach out to John and he can get those answers for you. Moving along, we've got our committee subcommittees. Did anybody have any means they want to?
Chief, I don't know.
Oh, Chief, do you want, I mean, you're not on my agenda, but you want to talk?
I'm prepared.
Okay, go go ahead. I'm going to write you in right now.
Well, well, thank you for doing that. Uh, I I just also want to echo of uh Mr. Harris that's coming about the light parade from a law enforcement perspective. We thought it went very well, especially changing at the last minute to go that way instead of into our detour. Um, maybe notice we didn't have any patrol cars in the parade, we didn't have any. They were all on points with extra, the people on uh what, trying to make it safe for everybody else. And I out at the four corners and it it went really, really well. Uh, just a little bit of activity for the last two weeks. I hate to say the Q word, but it was kind of flooded. We only had two.
You know, there's another word that we don't say around Scott DeBrees, and so you might have just jinxed yourself.
Oh, boy. We only, we had a couple of crashes and and one drunk driver. Um, we did have, we did respond to, well, the school resource officer was already there when we had a medical emergency at the at the high school. We had a student who was having an asthma attack. He recognized it right away, um got NISA coming and got the parent coming. So we were, got that taken care of and and the student got transported to be checked out at Sparrow. So again, just a a positive reinforcement of having, you know, that school resource officer at the schools um as we do. Couple of other cases that we had this past week were which were kind of big. We had an extortion case, uh had an employee, um and I don't want to go too far into it um just for, you know, sensitive sensitive to the company. But they were dismissing an employee who had a lot of access to computer logins and passwords. He took him hostage, um negotiating his uh separation package. And uh it it brought, it brought this, you know, they, one of the owners finally came to the office and I I don't know what to do. You know, um, our attorney, we sent him a cease and desist letter, he just ramped it up from there. Um, so I I took the report, found out who the guy was, let him know what he was doing with a twenty-year felony.
Wow.
Um, to add on a few more identity theft, uh using a computer to commit a felony. And um, we started picking up three, four felonies, it's hard to get rid of all of them. I told me until five o'clock the next day to make it right, or else his actions would dictate mine. He had them all back. So um, I mean, a very good outcome to that case, but very, very labor intensive, um doing all the follow-up, doing the report writing, making sure it was documented, showing all the elements of that. Uh, it is, in my opinion, rather fun, just just to bring satisfaction back to the these these folks because they, she was in tears, they were in tears because he was shutting down customers' websites now. Just a, it was a, it was a terrorist act.
Wow.
And he didn't realize, didn't realize it. So anyways, we're all good with that one, closed it out, and she didn't want prosecution if he returned everything, which everybody wins. Um, the other one we had the exact same day was a serious domestic. Um, started out as a welfare check, and we went to the the apartment, nobody's answering, no lights are on. Long story short, we were able to get the apartment complex key holder to let us in. We found the victim back in 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 her bedroom, um pretty beat up. So we got medics there, um Detective Pintar did a great job with her. We found out who the suspect was. She didn't want to tell us because she was so afraid of this guy, but uh Joe did some great digging. We ended up getting a three-count felony warrant um for the suspect who does not does not live here in the city. And she wasn't either, she was staying with her daughter. Uh, we had assault, uh less than murder, um witness intimidation. He threatened to kill her, she told the police. And he had he had a prior domestic violence out as on his record, so we hit him for domestic violence. So being that he's from a neighboring area, um I called someone, contact out of the state police future team, so they'll be watching me in shortly.
That's my good one.
Um, so that was, that was, that was a great, great case. Um, again, my partner said, oh, it's it's a quiet day today, and it all went downhill from there. So, you know me, I always like to finish on a positive note. Um, we were partnering with a um, I don't know what you call it, a nonprofit of, anyways, they're called Santa's First Responders. Um, it's retired police officer, buddy of mine out of uh Meridian Township is running this. It's the first annual Be Unbroken for Courageous Sparrow Kids, which will take place this Friday, the eighteenth. What it is, first responders are going to all stage um down Lansing area, and they're going to go by the oncology unit at at Sparrow for the kids that are there and try to give them a Christmas. So I think they're trying to get some gifts together too in doing that, get Santa Claus for that. But our role is it with all our partners is we're going to go outside with the patrol car lights on and for them to look at their windows and see all the patrol cars. So there should be some pictures coming, they're going to put a drone in the air, so hopefully we have some footage for next time for that. And one last plug for Officer Bradbury, she's doing the polar plunge for Special Olympics. I did not join her, I don't jump in cold water. So it's on our, it's going to be on our website if they want to click and support Special Olympics.
So also, you had um Bradbury and Campbell that did Shop With a Cop. Did they do Shop With a Cop?
Dave.
Phil Campbell?
Campbell?
He's on your Facebook.
It's not Campbell.
Or who was it? It was it was one of the reserves, it was Bradbury and.
He's a pastor out at the church, Dave.
I know, I want to see.
That's not right, oh, but anyways, yeah, yes, they did Shop With a Cop.
Okay.
And I don't know if I saw pictures of the basketball game that Officer Bradbury and Officer Mixon were involved in with.
Yes, yep, yeah.
So, yeah, that was really fun to watch.
I was supposed to do that, but surgery.
That was, that was, that was a great thing. I want to give one little more plug for the city here, um because this was really never meet. We went to the theater Saturday night, oh my goodness. It's a, it's a Christmas story about the city.
Yep.
And there's four actors, but they're like eight different people. So people are changing costumes really quick. If if if, you gotta go, especially with all the poles missing now, it's just so much. I mean, we laughed the whole time.
Yeah.
It was so much fun.
Good.
So if you if you haven't been there to see it, I really recommend you do it, it was just awesome. Yeah, I just can't say, I mean, we had so much fun, it's date night, it was so much fun.
We have a pretty cool scene.
It is, and the play was hilarious, too. So tell us about the city.
All right, excellent, thank you, Chief, I appreciate that.
You bet.
All right, uh, we have an, um, oh, now we're going to go back to the committee reports here. Gosh, you know, December meetings are almost like I'm. All right, who has a committee report they'd like to share? Anyone? Dan?
I had the opportunity to fill in for Councilman Pratt at NISA last week. Had a lot going on down there. Um, they went out for some training to Traverse City on a, on how to inspect marijuana grow operations in homes and some of the things that were happening with electricity with those grow operations and how to identify those and bring in DTE to look at the different draws for homes because they've had a lot of transformers blowing up and different things, electrical fires due to that. So about four different firefighters and inspectors got uh got training on that in Traverse City in the last month. Um, some new equipment purchases, things like that. They had um their budget hearing for the year, um so they're working on their new budget. I do, I did have some questions on the way their budget comes together. When in the middle of their budget hearing, they were still bringing additions to the budget in the public hearing for the budget. So I did ask some questions about how how the budget comes together with that. Seems like it was kind of normal, but I did, was curious about that. Um, they're still in conversations with the Weberville DDA on trying to come together, come to a revenue sharing agreement on that, um similar to what our DDA has with them. But the, they had a tentative of agreement for twenty thousand dollars to be shared from the DDA capture. The NISA board is sending another offer back that they would like thirty thousand dollars, and the Weberville DDA is yet, is supposed to meet uh yet this year. And they're going to discuss that again when I should come back.
All right.
That was the NISA meeting.
Well, thanks, thanks for filling in for them, I appreciate it. Any others? It's been, it's been a quiet period of time, but you know, hopefully planning is going to get ramped back up now that we're going to need to get more things to know. So that'll be, that'll be good. Um, all right. I know I was going to say quiet, right? See, Chief said it first. Um, all right, we have an opportunity for audience participation if anybody would like to come forward at this time. All right, moving along, council member comments, I'll start to my left, here with Terry.
Parks and Recs coming up on Wednesday, looking forward to it.
Excellent. Steve, welcome.
Thank you, and just to listen and learn.
Glad to have you here. Brandon?
Um, I'm honored to have the role of Mayor Pro Tem, and I'd like to thank both of our members for joining us, and I'm excited for this upcoming year.
All right, thanks, Dan.
I'd just like to echo uh Councilman Lanyon in welcoming our new council members, and I look forward to it.
Scott, this should be like deja vu, you've been at this table before, but welcome again.
Yeah, it is interesting to be back, and I'd like to, I like to promote the creative activities in town, and I'm glad to hear the play was mentioned, written by John Leopard under the name of Robert Hallmark. I'm so jealous that he came up with Robert Hallmark.
Right.
It's just too good, and it's led to um the, a lot of, some of them are sold out already. I got tickets, but it was hard to do.
Right, I think they're, I think it's going till the twenty-third, right?
Yeah, yeah. So when I got tickets for the seventeenth, there was only four left.
Wow.
So I'm not sure about the other ones, but. And then the Art Williamson show at the um middle school next to the library, um that shows the um some of the local town that's well about paintings. And the next show there will be, is called Love Is In The Air, interpreted very loosely so artists can fit in what they've already done with their life. That'll be going up on January twenty and twenty-one. So, thanks, good to be here.
All right, excellent. Well, this is the last meeting of the year, so I want to thank everybody for their service to this city. From the gals that sit in this office here, that answer the phone calls of our residents, our police force, our department, our DPW workers. Everybody really goes over and above what they do for this city all year long. And I couldn't, you know, light parade was fantastic, um we had great weather. It was a little chilly, but downtown, this year I did not ride in the parade. I I chose to walk through town, stop in and and chat with businesses, and it was amazing. That I I wish that every single night our city was hopping like that. I know that when we have productions at the theater or the car shows on Thursday or the different events that we have, um there's always a a higher number of people here in the city. But man, it'd be neat to see Williamson that active every single night because it was just so much fun. And I want to thank Chamber of Commerce for putting together such a great light parade. And everybody else that helped with DPW for putting up barricades, the um, the the patrol and the reserves for making sure that the parade route was safe. Um, our Santa for coming and helping us light the tree that he does every year. So I just really can't thank everybody enough. I want to thank our new members for being here at the table. And I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season as we roll through the end of this month. And I know that we still have a couple more meetings yet that will take place. I'm looking forward to DDA and Chamber coming together for our work session. That's something that we've not done. I think it's going to be a great partnership where we can really get on the same page about how we um work together to promote Williamson. Um, I think that's going to be a big thing this year, I'm very excited about it. And I certainly want to include all of our service organizations in that as well. And I'd invite any of our council members and to come and sit in on those work sessions as we get them going because um we cannot have enough input. Um, you know, um, that's the one great thing I think that we do well is when we're all together in a room and and we um, we think about what we want to do for this community, for our residents and for our businesses. Um, we do a very good job. So with that, I will go ahead and adjourn us at eight oh two. Thank you so much.